Welcome to the Mill Creek Township School Board Meeting for Monday, September 22nd, 2025. This evening's school board meeting will be held in person here at the Mill Creek Education Center. It is also available to view on YouTube livestream. The agenda and meeting minutes and school board policies are all available through Board Docs. Any individual wishing to participate in the board meeting must comply and submit a speakers form to the board this evening vice president or secretary. The president is joining us by phone to speak at the meeting. Participants must be recognized by the preceding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name. Each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes in duration. Access to that policy regarding public participation is in board meetings. Visit the district website, Policy 903. With that, I'd like to open the meeting. Ms. Condon, can you call hold please?
Mr. Brink?
Here.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Philbeck?
Here.
Mr. Kobilka?
Here.
Mr. Lindner?
Present.
Ms. Newsom?
Here.
Ms. Pasquale?
Here.
Mr. Winchell?
Here.
Ms. Winchell?
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Present.
And Attorney Hering?
Here.
Thank you for that. Item 1.02, executive session announcement. There was an executive session held directly before the board meeting about personnel matters. 1.03 approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion for approval? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
1.04, the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in particular of our important citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Section two minutes. I'd like to bring these two items forward. If I could have a motion for 2.01, the school board meeting minutes of August 18th, 2025, and 2.02, the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 8th, 2025. Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Section three, visitors. We do have one visitor that has already pre-registered. The name of other visitors, please come up and fill out a form now. Mr. Aliotta, if you would like to take podium first, you have three minutes from the time you- thank you.
Well, good evening, board, public officials, parents, students, and taxpayers. Let me continue to share my thoughts relative to the violations of law, public officials' oath of office reporting illegal actions and their consequences. I don't want to fatigue your mind with particulars, but do you know what your attorney Devlin has done since June 2023? He has not submitted discovery production of documents requested for at least the past six-plus months, never finalized any settlement for specific school board directors. Now you will be deposed. Has any school board director seen or discussed any of the issues of my federal complaint? Are you all living in the dark? Do you have any idea what is happening? Taxpayers of Mill Creek want to know why they have to pay the cost of litigation when it has already been discovered and ordered by Judge Braybender that the school board illegally sued me and illegally used taxpayer money to sue me. Public officials, including the former superintendent's solicitor, present solicitor not included, and other attorneys and members of the school board have destroyed my life, my livelihood, defamed me to thousands of taxpayers, parents, and students, and continue to abuse their position to continue to silence me. Let me bring up the statement from President Winchell when he asked, I think it was two meetings ago, "Call your Pennsylvania representative and senators and tell them to increase the taxpayer money to Mill Creek." I believe it was school board Philbeck that agreed with him, but I ask school board director Philbeck and President Winchell, did you present what you have done to me on a personal basis and as a public elected official? I guess, you know, did you report to the representatives that you have violated U.S. and Pennsylvania laws? I guess you will have to answer that question when you are all deposed for your sworn testimony. You know, I really do admire your confidence in the lack of knowledge. What legal advice are you really getting? Ask yourself, what do I do?
Thank you, Ms. Aliotta.
Okay. Thank you. To be continued.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to section four, old business. Do you not believe we have any old business? Is there any out there from the board? Hearing none, we will move on to section five, instruction and student services. Ms. Winchell, would you like to lead, please?
Thank you. All 20 action items for approval this evening were discussed at the Instruction and Student Services Committee meeting, which was held on September 6th. Items 5.01 through 5.07, approvals requested for the curriculum for the following courses. 5.01 is elementary English Language Arts in grades kindergarten, one, two, three, four, and five. 5.02, the ELA Grade 11 Academics and Honors. 5.03, the ELA Grade 12 Academics and Honors. 5.04, Disney, the happiest elective on earth. 5.05, fantasy and science fiction literature. 5.06, short stories elective. And 5.07, grade 10 world history academic. 5.08 is a cross-country field trip request. Approvals requested for the cross-country team to attend the 24th Annual SWAG Louisville Cross Country Classic, October 3rd and 4th. All costs are paid by boosters. 5.09, Holy Family affiliation agreement. This is a standard agreement so that students in the Holy Family University School of Nursing can have the opportunity for clinical experiences in our district. It's a one-year agreement. It can be renewed each year. 5.10 is a field trip for J.S. Wilson Walnut Creek and Westlake students. All three of our middle schools are asked, are asking to send interested students to Diggers and Dumpers event at the Erie County Technical School on September 26th. This is at no cost to the district. 5.11, the McDowell TSI Plan. At the committee meeting, Mr. Murdock gave a summary of the 30-page document that is attached to this agenda item. 5.12, approvals requested to send one teacher to the National Council of Teachers of English and the Conference of English Leadership that's scheduled for November 19 through 25 in Denver, Colorado. This is at no cost to the district other than the cost of a substitute teacher. 5.13, approvals requested to send one teacher to attend the Council of Economic Education's annual financial literacy and economic conference, October 16 through 18 in New Orleans. Again, this is at no cost to the district other than a substitute teacher. 5.14, the Northwest Tri-County IU Number Five SAP Mental Health Liaison Letter of Agreement. This agreement allows us to provide essential services for the student assistance program during the '25-'26 school year. 5.15, approvals requested for the Community County Day School Continuum of Placement Options Agreement. MTSD will pay $105 per day whether the student is regular ed or special ed that requires this placement. The remainder of the agenda items are for individual students to receive services from the Barber National Institute. 5.16 through 5.19 are for individual students to receive one-on-one aid services at $215 a day for the '25-'26 school year. 5.16 for student A, 5.17 for student B, 5.18 for student C, 5.19 for student D. And finally, 5.20 is a service agreement for student E. Student for extended school year services at $243 a day for 23 days from July 1 to August 1. That same student also needed one-to-one aid services at a rate of $167 per day for 23 days from July 1 to August 1. I'd like to make a motion to approve items 5.01 through 5.20.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion of any of the 20 items? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winchell. Item six is Personnel and Policy Cudding. Mr. Brink, could you please take that?
Thank you. All right. Item 6.01, Teamster Salary Schedule, MOU. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 6.01.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on 6.01? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
All right. Item 6.02, the organizational chart for 2025, and item 6.03, the revised job description. I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 6.02 and 6.03.
Second.
Any discussion-
I guess I need to make a motion. Sorry, I jumped in.
Thank you for the second. Any discussion on 6.02 or 6.03? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most of those items pass.
All right. Item 6.04, the September 22nd, 2025 Personnel Committee Report. At Bell Valley, we have a recommendation for a grade four teacher, long-term substitute. We have a change of status for a janitor at Westlake to janitor at Bell Valley. Also have a leave of absence for a grade four teacher. Also, a special education assistant, emotional support. At Chestnut Hill, we have a change of status for a music teacher, temporary professional contract. At Grandview, we have a recommendation for a kindergarten teacher, long-term substitute. A change of status for a kindergarten teacher, leave of absence. We have a rescinded offer for a long-term substitute kindergarten teacher and a termination of a special education assistant autistic support. At Tracy, we have a resignation of a special education assistant autistic support and a change of status for a school psychologist. At Walnut Creek, we have a change of status for a special education assistant life skills. We also have a leave of absence of a teacher, eighth grade math. At Westlake, we have a change of status for a teacher, grade seven, leave of absence. At J.S. Wilson, we have a resignation of a special education assistant autistic support. At Ridgefield/Sarah Reid, we have a recommendation for a special education teacher, emotional support, long-term substitute. We also have a change of status of a janitor at Bell Valley to janitor at Ridgefield. At McDowell intermediate, we have a recommendation for a education assistant library. We have a correction of a social studies teacher, long-term substitute. At McDowell, we have a recommendation for a school counselor, long-term substitute, a special education assistant, learning support. At the Mill Creek Education Center, we have a resignation of a varsity outdoor track throws coach and a human resources secretary. We have recommendations for temporary professional contract, professional contract, staff nurse. For student employment activity, we have driver and monitor. We have athletic supplements for 2025, 2026, and board-approved volunteers. We have a change of status for speech therapy assignments for 2025, 2026 school year. A leave of absence for a lead payroll specialist, a termination of a cheer coach, seventh and eighth grade football and basketball, and rescinded offers for two staff nurses. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the personnel report for September 22nd, 2025.
Second. Any discussion on the personnel report?
Dr. Jablonsky, under the recommendations for temporary professional contracts to professional contracts, are those all teachers that just came off one year and they're moving?
Those are the teachers that are being recommended for tenure. So, in the state of Pennsylvania, when you get the three years of satisfactory service, it moves from a temporary professional contract to a professional contract. They can earn those years. If they've come to us with tenure, they already have the professional contract. These are the individuals that earned their three years with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Section seven is the month-end close reports. Mr. Tool, do you want to lead?
Thank you. 7.01 and 7.02 are informational. They're the enrollment summary and investment summary. Are there any questions related to either one of those? And I would ask that we take 7.03 through 7.05 as a block, with 7.03 being our student activity account and officer signing off on those balances, 7.04 being our bond summary reports, and then 7.05 giving our financial reports related to the general fund, capital projects, and capital reserve as of June.
Thank you for that. I'd like to make a motion, as Mr. Tool has asked, for 7.03 through 7.05. I have a second.
Second?
Any discussion on any of those items? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those items pass as well.
Thank you.
Section 8 is the Finance and Operations Committee. I will be leading that unless, Mr. Winchell, you want to lead from a distance?
No, go ahead, Michael.
Okay. I'll pick those this evening. Mr. Winchell, we have nine items this evening. All of these items were reviewed at the committee, the whole meeting. So, we'll be bringing these in one block. 8.01 is the Asbury Woods Educational Programming and Facilities Use Agreement. 8.02 is a drainage easement agreement. You can note that had a minor change in it. Discuss that if you'd like. 8.03 is the exoneration of delinquent property taxes. 8.04 is the Accounts Payable Report. 8.05 are the Mill Creek Township School District Student Activity Account Officers for the month of September. 8.06 is the 2025 Christina Sue Lilja Grant. I apologize. I didn't get that right. 8.07 is the Dollar General Donation. 8.08 is a J.S. Wilson Back to School Bash Donation. And 8.09 is Deacon Lubricant Donation. So, I'd like to bring all nine items forward, and 8.01 through 8.09 is a motion. I have a second.
Second?
Any discussion on any of those items? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those items pass. That brings us to Section 9, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kavanaugh?
I have one item under the Superintendent's Report this evening. I'm requesting that we allow one teacher to attend the 2025 Jump Start National Educators Conference. The reason I'm bringing this forward at this time rather than wait to go to the committee is the timeline in order for her to purchase plane tickets to attend. So, the Mill Creek Township School, we're asking you to approve her to go to Boston, Mass. at a cost of $679. This is the same conference that she's gone to over the past few years and come back and reported, and that's one of the reasons that we are one of the front runners in the state of leading the importance of financial literacy. So, we're asking Mrs. Barsaski to get to attend this conference again.
I have a motion for that.
Motion.
Second? Any discussion on that request?
Just want to make a quick comment about the fact that we seem to have a number of teachers that are invited to conferences, and they are having their registration paid or they're having their lodging paid and all that. It speaks very well of them, and it speaks very well of the district. It makes me very proud of the job that they're doing.
I think in the last two years, we've done a great job of sending people to different conferences and coming back here and reporting on the different items that they're studying. I think it's excellent.
Commenting on that, the one thing I'd like to hear is not only that they report back to you guys, but they're telling us who else they're sharing it with. So, it's not like I go to a conference, I go to my classroom, and I implement it there. They share this across the district. So, they're really helping us get some meaningful PD out to one another, and then when they hear about it, more people want to go the next year. So, it's become a very good thing over the past couple of years, and I'm excited to see because it really kind of revigorated some of our teachers.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes as well. New business, 10.01. Does anyone have any new business that the board would like to discuss? Hearing none, seeing as we can't bring it up anyway. We'll move on to Item 11, Solicitors' Report.
No report.
Okay. Item 12, Remarks. Advisory Committee Update. Ms. Nation?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a brief explanation because this is something new that we're going to be doing. During the summer, we had a retreat, and we made some board goals, and one of the goals was that we want to become better advocates for our district. And there's two main parts to that. One, we want to be more active with public officials, whether it be talking with them, sending letters, to share things that are happening in Mill Creek with them, and also to share our concerns about things that maybe they have an influence over. And then the second part of it is to attend more Mill Creek events as they happen. We vote on these things all of the time, and it's nice to go out and be a part of them and see what's happening in the district. And we're also available then to talk with students, parents, taxpayers, when we're out in public, if they have any concerns or questions or positive things. So, each meeting from now on, at the board meeting, we're going to include a section, if anyone has anything to share, about things that we've been to or people that we've talked to, and we just want to share it with you. And I'll start off the first. There are two things that I attended this month. The first one was the open house at J.S. Wilson. It's my understanding that, I know that we sent, and this goes right along with what John was saying, we sent people to the Pennsylvania Middle School Conference, and they came back with an idea that they learned, I believe they said from Titusville, about doing open houses differently. And so, I believe it was Abby Nelson came back and suggested that they try it at J.S. Wilson, and all three middle schools jumped on board. And instead of the typical open house that we've had forever, the open house allowed families to come, the students, their parents, there were grandparents there. They got to come and see the classrooms that they're going to be in. They could talk with the teachers. They had all kinds of, I was actually there as a volunteer of the caring place. They had different things like that set up. There was a school supply section. They had a scaveng, there were all kinds of activities, and it was more of a celebration of school starting, and it was awesome. They got very, very positive feedback from it, from what I understand. So, that was one big thing that came back that they shared with all the middle schools because of a conference that they went to. The other thing that I attended was the Homecoming Parade. This is the first time I had been there for quite a few years, and I was just really impressed at the community feeling and the students that were so proud of their schools and the amount of students that participated. It was just a really exciting event. So, is there anyone else that had anything they'd like to share?
I would like to share. I went to the Asbury Summer Bash, and it was a good experience. There were a lot of kids, many teachers there, running up to their teachers, talking to their teachers. Parents had a chance to speak with one another. There were games, and kids on the playground helping, and whole families came. Several administrators were there as well. It was a wonderful experience, good way to start school. And I agree with Sally with the homecoming. There were several board members there for the parade and the game. The game was awesome, by the way, and so was the parade. And it was great to see the school spirit and all the children together.
There's an excitement at that homecoming parade and game that you don't get at other places. It is very exciting. Gary and I were also able to attend the first hour of the first teacher day before students started, to hear the speaker on artificial intelligence, and it was very, very interesting. She was very knowledgeable about what it was she was talking about, and it was very thought-provoking.
I would just like to comment. I did attend the Homecoming Parade as well. I think it's one of the things that McDowell does very well. Mill Creek shows off all of our schools, and it's good to see all the administrators there. And I'd like to maybe possibly ask the board if that's something that maybe we should consider walking in next year, to be part of that, to show our participation in the district as well. And that's something we, you know, internally discuss as a possibility moving forward. But definitely, it's a unique thing to showcase our school district, and I don't think that anyone else really has Homecoming Parade in town. So, it sets us off and makes us very unique.
I don't know, Michael. Are you asking that we also provide a float of some type? Because those floats were really incredible.
You can join and just walk with us if you want to skip the float.
Or the convertible cars that you wave from. I like that. I think that's a good idea, Mike. I like that.
Me, too.
I also attended the parade, and I wanted to give a shout-out to our SROs because their black sport utility was spit-shine. It looked good, and there was tire juice on it, and it looked really nice, and I was impressed with it. So, nice to see it.
Thank you for that. 12.02, Parks and Recreation.
There was no meeting. There's nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. 12.03, PSBA?
Yeah, they would just like to reinstate or reinforce, I guess, the fact that the Pennsylvania State Budget's still not passed, and it's costing us money every day. So, if we talk to our local officials, try to get that across the finish line.
12.04 is the MEF Partnership. Bear with me here. I did report from them. So, the MEF has established two new funds. AJ's Heart Champions Fund. The fund was established in memory of DC Weary, McDowell Class of 2010 by his family. Purposes of the fund is, one, to create awareness through educational offerings at MTSB schools about blood clotting conditions, early detection, patient advocacy; two, to support the McDowell Varsity Football Program in various ways, and/or scholarship; and three, support the needs of Mill Creek Township students, teachers. There are two fundraisers scheduled to support the fund. There's a dog walk at Frontier Park on October 4th, and Arby's Restaurants will be supporting the fund through a national campaign benefiting nonprofits selected by employees. For more information, you can visit the MEF website. The second fund is the McDowell Class of 1985. The fund was established by the McDowell Senior High Class of 85, for remaining funds from their 40th class reunion. That's making me feel old. 85 is not too far away. The funds are invested and used for future class reunions at the discretion of class for things done in the name of the Class of 1985. MEF Grants. The August Board Meeting, the fund trustees approved the following two grant proposals. One is from McDowell High School. Student-centered hands-on resources for high school accounting. It will purchase funds for instructional materials, which will include scaffolds, lessons, plans, both printable and digital formats, interactive notes, and capstone simulation. The curriculum emphasizes real-world relevance, creativity, and active learning. It also comes with a free lifetime of updates for the materials. The other was for Tracy Elementary School Active Bodies/Active Minds Project. Project will introduce six compact, foldable treadmills and eight under-desk utility ellipticals to support student wellness. Initially, the equipment will be introduced to the autistic and emotional support students and will be made available to all students later in the school year. The initiative aims to promote physical health, improve mental focus, support academic engagement, and encourage self-regulation and lifelong healthy habits. The next round of MEF grant applications are due December 1st. Inspirations for Instructions grant applications are open until October 1st for MTSB teachers setting up their first-ever classroom. These applications are available on the "What We Support" tab of the MEF website, and funds may be used for classroom decor, setup, and other items needed by teachers or students. Molly Kennedy. The MEF provides funded funding along with the middle school PTAs to support the MEF Re-Humble Fund to bring nationally acclaimed speaker Molly Kennedy to MTSB for in-service before school started. Molly spoke about the human factor, powerful reminder of the importance of empathy, connection, and showing up for one another in your school and beyond. During her humanizing presentation, she introduced the Flip Your 20, a method to stop the spiraling in thinking and actions, and the importance of dosing, which is giving people around you a dose of goodness. Tracy Back to School Bash and Wellness Fair. Elder's Piece of the Puzzle. The MEF supported a grant to Tracy Elementary for their first wellness fair, held in conjunction with their Back to School Bash. The MEF had a boost to share with families about our Elder's Piece of the Puzzle Fund. This scholarship is open to any MTSB K-12 students seeking assistance with the costs associated with attending out-of-school activities. Applications are accepted all year and are available on the MEF website. The fund is named for Steve Eller. McDowell Class of 2004 was established in his memory by his friends and family to connect our students with others in the community, just like Steve did, where he made friends forever. Thank you note to Tim and Darla Elder for the donation of 40 backpacks that were given to the MEF for elementary schools. And just a reminder that the MEF may accept gifts through a special purpose entity from individuals to support Mill Creek students. Individuals in Pennsylvania may redirect their state tax liability to support MTSB educational initiatives through the EITC program. If you pay $3,500 in PA tax, you may be eligible to direct your tax payment to the MEF. In addition to the state tax credit, individuals may also be able to claim federal charitable deduction for the remaining 10% of their contribution. If that's something you're interested, please contact the MEF for more information. And last, the MEF Schoolhouse Craft Festival. Area crafters and artisans may apply by September 30th to be a vendor at the MEF Schoolhouse Craft Festival. Application is on the MEF website. The event will be held at McDowell Intermediate High School on December 6th and 7th. Hours of the event with the doors now being opened at 9:00 a.m. each day and closing at 4:00 Saturday and 3:00 p.m. on Sunday. The MEF has been busy this last month. Are there any other board remarks? 12.05. Dr. Kavanaugh?
I do have a few remarks I would like to share this evening. First, I would like to congratulate two of our McDowell students, Kathryn Pelkowski and Gridley Wright. Those two students were named National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. So, that's quite the honor. I would like to give a shout-out to our senior running back, Brody Bonzel. As you mentioned earlier, how exciting the football game was this week. The final score of that game, if you did not see, was 65 to 47. So, it was quite entertaining. And Brody Bonzel, during that game, broke three school records. He broke the record for 381 rushing yards. He scored seven touchdowns himself, which equated to 42 total points scored. We had another sophomore kicker, Joey Clark, and Joseph tied the school record for most points by a kicker by scoring 11 points in this game. I would like to give a shout-out to a couple of our teachers, first being Mindy Marshall. Mindy is the one who organized along with the Girl Athletic Club, both the Homecoming Parade and the Homecoming Dance. I mean, I've been going to the Homecoming Parade for a long time, and that's one of the best-attended ones I've seen in a long time. And I know from the dance perspective, I heard everything went well, and we had over 1,300 kids attend the Homecoming Dance. So, thank you to Mindy for organizing both these events. They were very well-attended and very successful. I would also like to shout-out to Mr. Becker and Mr. Stokoe for an excellent Hall of Fame banquet. Saturday afternoon over at the Colony, they recognized the new Hall of Fame inductees for this year, and it was a great day. It was probably one of the largest ones we've seen. I think they got more people. They were expecting about 110 to 120. I think we had over 150. So, we were pulling tables up and setting up more as people entered. So, it was great to see that. And the unique part about the Hall of Fame is we get to hear so many people who are McDowell graduates from various years come back and tell stories about the impact that McDowell had on them, and that's what I like to hear the most. So, congratulations to all of those people, and great start to the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh. Brings us to Item 13, Adjournment. Just before we take that, just as a reminder, the next regularly scheduled meeting for the Mill Creek Township School Board of Directors will be held on October 13th, 2025. The committee meetings will begin at 6:00 p.m. There are three committee meetings held, one right after another. It will go Instruction and Student Services, Personnel Policy, Finance and Operations. There will be a committee of the whole if needed. The committee of the whole meeting typically will begin immediately following the last committee meeting for the evening. That being said, I have a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for joining us this evening.